This is Joni. Today is Monday, March 11th to 2024. We are still in International Women's Hurstery Month. And today we're going to be looking at the issue of ceasefire resolution in DC City Council and also be looking at why are so many city councils right in our region and around the country having such a difficult time and that why is there so much resistance to adopting a ceasefire resolution to stop this genocide in Gaza? We are going to be joined for the hour by a number of ministers in the DC area. And I'll introduce them in a moment with an organization called Faith Strategies, which was started by, I'm going to call him our very own Reverend Graylin Hagler, who's joining us today. We also are honored to have Mimi from Palestinian Youth Movement, who's going to start us off with a tribute to Palestinian women and her perspective on what's happening with this genocide and why we must, at the very least, have an immediate and permanent ceasefire. And we're going to be starting with a song. Hopefully, let's hear a little bit of Ayana Gregory singing "Ceasefire." That's our own Ayana Gregory singing "Ceasefire." And I'd like to introduce our guests for the hour. Again, we're going to be starting off in a minute with Mimi from the Palestinian Youth Movement. Then we have Reverend Patty Fears, and I'm going to have them introduce themselves as well, Dr. Tate, and Graylin Hagler. So let's start with Mimi. Welcome, Mimi, with the Palestinian Youth Movement.
Hello, Joni. Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for having me today.
I'm glad you could be with us. And I've heard you at many demonstrations. Quite a powerful speaker and person you are. So share with the listeners a little bit about you and what your thoughts are today as this genocide continues each and every day. Are you from, tell us a little bit about your background.
Absolutely. My name is Mimi, and I'm a member of the Palestinian Youth Movement, which is a transnational, independent grassroots organization of Palestinian and Arab youth fighting for the liberation of our homeland from Zionist imperialism and settler colonialism. I am half Palestinian and half Syrian. My grandfather was born in Yafa, and most of his family after forty-eight went to Nablus, and he went to a city called Tulkaram. And then after that, he had to, obviously, be displaced after sixty-seven. And so today, I just wanted to, you know, come on here and honor our Palestinian women. This month and every month, we honor Palestinian women, you know, who have resisted the occupation on all fronts, from our grandmothers, our mothers, our sisters, our aunts, daughters, from our journalists, such as Shereen Abu Akli, may God rest her soul, who was martyred as she was reporting on the Zionist raids in Jenin, to our doctors, such as Amira Al Asoli, who bravely risked her life running through a barrage of acted gunfire to reach a patient who was in need of critical care in Gaza, to Israab Jabis, who underwent torture and abhorrent things in Zionist prisons and was a mother to so many of those still detained, to our women organizers in the diaspora, who tirelessly day in and out fight for the liberation of our people from Zionism and imperialism. And I just want to note that in the past five months, about nine thousand, nine thousand women have been killed during this ongoing genocide at the hands of the Zionist state funded by the United States. And so every day that passes, we honor our Palestinian women, who again have resisted on all fronts. And these conversations about honoring our women cannot be done without carrying on their legacy, right, and carrying on their lessons and what they have taught us here as the younger generation, as those who, you know, are displaced transnationally. And so, as I said, every day, we honor Palestinian women in all that we do, in all that we say, in our studies, in our words, in our workplaces, in our organizing. And to me, that is the most important aspect of this month, is to call out colonial feminism, right, that gives no ode, no recognition to Palestinian women, who are having to give birth under this genocide with no anesthesia, with no medical resources, who have been completely silent to the number of pregnant women who have been murdered at the hands of the Zionist state that is being funded by the United States, to the sexual violence that our women have undergone in prisons at the hands of Israeli occupation forces. And so while this month, we will see a lot of colonial feminists talk about, you know, their concerns on what feminism is, I want to call out their complicity in this genocide and their complete disregard to Palestinian women.
Absolutely. And I think that's a really important phrase, colonial feminism. It really needs to be discussed more and said more. I was shocked to go online and see something from the Israeli military where they were praising women for being part of the killing and the murder, and yet they're calling that feminism. So I think it's very important to, you know, expand our understanding of what true feminism should be, and that is caring of all women, no matter what, and not just a superficial feminism. Talk to us, Ameemi, about the importance of an immediate and permanent ceasefire, and of course, as well as the end to this occupation.
So when we, when we talk about a ceasefire, right, everybody kind of just tracks back to October. And no one likes to think about the past seventy-six years for Palestinians, right? And so what I like to say is beyond ceasefire. You know, an immediate ceasefire is incredibly important so we can get aid to our people, you know, so we can get them the access to the medical resources and the basic human resources that they need. Those who are, again, are starving in Gaza, the rates of that, the statistics that have come out about the famine, the malnutrition have been, have been shocking, right? And for the world to go on and all of these different governments to continue business as usual as people are starving to death, due to their funding, right, due to their military aid, due to their weapons, is something that we can no longer sit back and just accept. And so an immediate and permanent ceasefire, that's the most important aspect of it. We don't want a temporary pause. The Palestinian people and Palestinian organizers in the diaspora, we have all been incredibly clear and united that there, there is no need for a temporary pause. We need an immediate and permanent ceasefire. Because what comes after a temporary pause? So our people could just have a moment of peace, right? And then six weeks later, the bombing continues? And the no access to medical resources or clean waters, clean water goes on? No, we need an immediate and permanent ceasefire and beyond that. We need the US to end all military aid to the Zionist state immediately. We need the seventeen year siege on Gaza lifted immediately, right? We need all our political prisoners to be freed immediately. We need an end to the seventy-six year long occupation of Palestine funded, you know, by the United States, you know, ended. We need that ended immediately. And so when we have these conversations about ceasefire, I think it's incredibly important to also think beyond it, and that it doesn't just end with a ceasefire. And in my opinion, I believe that that's what scares these, you know, war criminals the most, because they know that a temporary ceasefire is not going to be enough, and that our demands are going to continue to, to increase and continue to stay the same, because this is quite frankly, what we've wanted for the past, you know, seventeen years for Gaza, for the siege to be lifted, sorry, for the past seventy-six years, for all of Palestine, for the occupation to end, and for all US military aid to end. And so I think it's incredibly important that when people are advocating for a permanent ceasefire, right, to keep in mind that there are also other demands that are just as important, and that will follow beyond a ceasefire. And, you know, we've seen this, the Biden administration not just be complicit, but be directly responsible for this genocide. When I hear people say complicit, in my mind, I'm thinking, no, they are directly responsible, hands in hands with the Zionist government for this genocide, the way that Biden has bypassed Congress to send billions of dollars to the Zionist government to continue its bombing campaign on Gaza. And so, you know, it's incredibly important, as I've said, for us to think beyond a ceasefire, because so long as this government continues to fund the occupation, continues to fund the siege, continues to fund the military warfare that is being inflicted on our people at the hands of the Zionist state, then, then we will never see a day of freedom. And so we need an end to all US military aid now. And to me, an immediate and permanent ceasefire goes hand in hand with that demand.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Mimi, with the Palestinian Youth Movement. Thank you for staying with us for the hour. And we're now going to move into a segment talking with several ministers who were recently in a meeting with the Chair of the DC City Council, Phil Mendelson. And I think listeners will want to hear what Phil Mendelson had to say. I was kind of very shocked when I heard, but then again, it's no surprise. And we hopefully have three ministers joining us today, Reverend Graylin Hagler, I think is going to join us first, Reverend Patty Fears, and hopefully, Dr. Tate. So we're trying to get Reverend Patty and Dr. Tate back on the line. But let's go with Graylin Hagler. Good morning, Graylin.
Good morning, Joni. How you doing?
Okay. So tell us first of all, a little bit about Faith Strategies and then the, the fact that Faith Strategies is part of a coalition called DC Ceasefire Coalition. You recently had a meeting with Phil Mendelson, but bring our listeners up to snuff.
Yeah, Faith Strategies is a collective of clergy, and we work around the theological and moral implication of social justice issues. And we had a meeting coming out of a takeover of the council that took place on March 1st. The chairman wanted us at a meeting with us for March 6. But what I want to do, I want to turn it over to our womanist theologian, Reverend Patricia Fears, because we keep talking about feminism, but there's a difference between feminism and womenist theology and ideology. Reverend Fears.
Thank you so much, Graylin. Hi, everybody. I am Reverend Patty Fears. I'm the Senior Pastor of Fellowship Baptist Church in Washington DC, and also really a proud, connected member of Faith Strategies. Now, just so you know, womenist theology is very much rooted in the African-American female struggle. It is seeing, it is shaking our womanism self, looking at the text, looking at the issues from the perspective of our unrelenting and undaunted commitment to moral and just morality and justice. So when we look at things that womanist came, was coined by Katie Cannon, that that language comes from our swag, because we are relentless in what we do. We, we represent those iddy-bewells that just like, I don't care what you say, Frederick Douglass and Booker T. Washington and W. E. B. Du Bois, no, people are getting lynched, lives are changing. I was pleased and excited to be with the young Palestinians on Friday for the action. And I was glad that it took place in front of the city council at the Wilson Building, because what took place on last Wednesday was an abomination to the city. To have our council chair just push us off, claim our voices as irrelevant and having no value was disheartening. And as a womanist theologian, when I look at the text, everything I see in text speaks to the fact that it is women that have to lift up, be persistent, and be almost angry about these issues, to make sure that the morality of the community is lifted up, to make sure that no one, no child, it broke my heart on Friday to hear about women in the District of Columbia that is already struggling with the morbidity rate for young people being so high amongst people of color that are trying to have children in the midst of a bombing, who are having cesarean sections, of which I had three. So I can't even imagine having them without any anesthesia. And it, and it just kind of echoed what I heard when I was in Chicago, that you have young people, children, who are not just amputees, but multiple limbed amputees, that this is taking place. There are mothers who have struggled with IVF, and now they don't have a child or a husband. We can't act as if this doesn't matter. Our moral compass is now at a flat zero, and we need to lift that thing up. And what took place, as I said, with Council Chair Mendelson, was an abomination and an embarrassment for every citizen, not just women, every citizen in Washington.
Absolutely. And we know that, you know, we can't certainly right now, can't count on the president to really make sure that we stop this genocide. So we need to be going to cities such as Washington DC. And I think we need to focus on the fact, and I'm sure that Graylin and Dr. Tate can also share what happened in that meeting with Phil Mendelson. So let's move now to Dr. Tate. Welcome. And help me to introduce yourself. You are with, tell us what
Faith Strategies.
Faith Strategies. And you, you have a long, but both you and Reverend Patty are native Washingtonians, so you have strong, deep roots here. And you do, do a lot in the city. I'm glad to see that you are on the Ward Seven Family Strengthening Collaborative, your vice chair. So welcome.
Yes, I'm glad to be here. I'm pastor of the Village Church. I'm also part of Faith Strategies and some other groups in the city. It doesn't matter at this point. But it's the meeting, and I'll get to that in a minute, but I was glad Reverend Patty, she is a resident womanist theologian. And it's important because there's a tension between black women and women of color and white women. That's, and that's what womanist theologians step into that space. And they put front and center the experiences of black women, women of color in particular, particularly women of black women, in terms of the larger society how they've been treated, not only in the larger society, but also within the black church. And so it's, it's an important, it's an important voice that we need to hear. A lot of people are unaware of it. There's, there's a difference between, I think, womanist in terms of Alice Walker and womanist theologians, and how they see scripture, and how they see the world as well. But they still, they, they're not necessarily disjointed. It's just some, some differences. But the meeting on last week was very disturbing. And one of the words that Mendelson used that really set a lot of us off and set me off was that what's happening in Palestine is inconsequential to what the council needs to be doing, inconsequential. And I want to think about that word for a moment. When children are dying, starving, women, when over thirty thousand people have been killed, even you got some courts, even though I think it was, it was a court that was trying to sort of indict Biden and his administration, of course, that fell through. But, but in that case, I think in California, on January 31st, they did say that genocide is going on. They made it very clear that this is happening. And so I don't know, you know, the, 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 the meeting was just in so many levels. It's just Mendelson and this other gentleman, which I can't remember his name, I think it's something, yes. Yeah, he just were very dismissive. And it was very indicative of white male sort of gazing, white supremacy being acted out, and taking issues that people of color have not seriously. The only person in that room, and I was, was Anita Barnes, who, who had any kind of compassion, showed any kind of compassion for the people of Palestine. And actually, you could, you can sense that she was actually hearing what was being said. And the other piece is that I think many of our elected officials forget that they are representing their constituents. They're representing the people. And it seems as if, and we, this isn't not anything new, that once they get in office, they represent themselves and special interest and not the people. Because the sentiment in DC is that there needs to be a ceasefire. And as Mimi said, a permanent ceasefire and humanitarian aid. We know we want a permanent ceasefire. That's the goal. But right now, we just, we need a ceasefire, and we need humanitarian aid, and we need that now.
Absolutely. And frankly, I don't see how they can be representing themselves. No human being should be advocating for genocide. And as I've said here on the radio before, I had thirty-seven of my relatives killed by Hitler. And this is what, similar to what's happened, must have been happening with Hitler, people just stood aside and said, oh, well, it doesn't affect them. So this is, is horrifying. And this is in our city, Washington DC, that is not allowing a vote on genocide. So I'm very happy that Reverend Hagler could join us. And Reverend Hagler is one of the leaders and founders of Faith Strategies, which has brought together faith leaders in this city to do many things, including to work to stop the genocide. So welcome, Reverend Hagler. Share with the listeners a little bit more details about what happened in that meeting with Mendelson, the Chair of the DC City Council.
Well, first of all, remember, the then meeting came out of a disruption of the city council on March 1st. That Mendelson felt that if he had a meeting, he could do the whole political sidestep and dance with us into basically toning it down and having control over it. I was never under any illusion. I knew that wasn't a negotiation session. So we didn't go in there with that attitude. We went in there to lay out our case. Andy Shalau, owner of Us Poison Poets, appealed that he was not being heard as an Arab who had invested a lot of money and time in DC. They refused to take his concerns to heart, as well as everybody else around the table. Reverend Young from Covenant Baptist, United Church of Christ, Reverend Tate, Reverend Fears, myself, other folks from the DC Ceasefire Coalition, just refused. What was telling was the only person of color on their side at the table was a woman and black, Anita Barnes, who felt empathy, felt compassion. The two white men shot her down. Tried to search for some language to put a resolution forward. They dismissed it, treating her as if her suggestion was insignificant. And basically, we told Mendelson, because he was up there complaining, because we would not relent that we had not heard him. And I said, the issue, we, we heard you, but we didn't kiss your behind, and that's what you're upset about. And meant that. He was very agitated, upset. And, you know, the fact is, is that we get very little out of this council by negotiation. They don't fear us. They have no concern for us. They have no regard for us. They have concern for big business. They have concern for money. They have no regard for the people. I also suggested to Mendelson, who else was at the table that wasn't there? And because they kept saying, if they put a resolution forward, that they wouldn't be able to do any other business in DC. And they kept saying that. So I asked the question, who else was at the table? And what I meant by that was they were obviously responding to an invisible Zionist lobby that was controlling them, and whoever else was controlling them. But they weren't listening to us. They weren't listening to the people in the District of Columbia. Because at the mass meeting held at Plymouth, as we organized these efforts, I asked people to raise their hands, who were DC residents. And we had well over a hundred people in that room. And over ninety-five percent
That's right.
raised their hands as DC residents. So you can't say that these folks are somebody else. These folks are your residents. These folks are your voters. These folks are me, Reverend Fears, Reverend Tate, our constituency, our people, and our community. And at this point, we'll be damned if we're going to be disregarded and not heard. If he wants to fight, we'll give him a fight. We'll give him a fight. That's where we are right now, unfortunately.
And we'll continue in a moment to talk about how listeners might be able to weigh in and contact uh and contact the city council. Uh you're listening to WPFW eighty-nine point three FM Jazz and Justice Radio. This is me, Joni, with To Heal DC, where we talk about healing ourselves, healing our communities and healing the world. And certainly, dealing with this genocide is very key to each and every one of us. Uh we're gonna hear now briefly from our program director. You know, when we we go to these meetings and um it's important to express the anger and the pain and the hurt that many of us are feeling uh this genocide. So this is a little clip from our own Katia Stitt. I believe this was March second at a rally and demonstration in front of the Israeli embassy.
I have to be witness to the thirty thousand plus people in Palestine who lost their lives. We have to be the mothers and fathers and aunties and uncles and mamas and babas for those children under the rubble, for those children who are burned and starving in the north of Gaza. We are here for them. And and because we're here for them, we're here for ourselves. We're here for our humanity. You know, we we don't exist if they don't exist. It's that simple. We're only gonna rise together or fail together.
That's right.
And right now, we are failing. We are both mothers. And we would never allow our children to endure what the Palestinian children in Gaza have endured.
That's right.
That would never happen. I told them at the Tacoma Park City Council that in Tacoma Park, we would never let a child fall down on the ground or lose a toy, much less lose their lives. So why do we ought to be starved of that? So why do we allow it with them?
Absolutely. And that is Katia Stitt. Uh Katia is involved with a movement with the Tacoma Park City Council to stop this genocide. And uh she would like me to announce that this Wednesday uh that resolution is gonna be taken up again. So anybody who either lives in Tacoma Park or is concerned that in our region in in the DMV, we need to be adopting, there needs to be more city councils that are adopting this ceasefire resolution. And it is disgraceful that Tacoma Park, which was had a very uh militant and wonderful mayor, Sammy Abbott, when they uh instituted us um uh many different amendments and and um stances in favor of peace. That they're not even, again, just like in in DC, they're not even allowing it to be discussed and voted on. So that's this Wednesday night at uh you can arrive there at seven o'clock at the DC, at the Tacoma Park uh City Council Building.
Now, let me say this, Joni. In some ways, Tacoma Park, Maryland is worse.
Yes, I agree.
They had it on their agenda five times. And they took it off their agenda five times.
Wow.
Which only shows you the pushback that they've gotten. And that they lis- listen to other voices and not to the people.
Absolutely. And when you sit at these meetings, it's it's very frightening because obviously they give other excuses. Like in Tacoma Park, they'll say that they wanna make sure that they don't uh I forget the words they use. They don't frighten other people uh who might who might agree.
And the other thing, and the other thing is that the Zionists rushed rushed the microphone last time in Tacoma Park. And they said things like, well, if you put this resolution on the agenda and pass it, I don't feel safe as a Jewish person. And I'm sitting there going, hell, I don't feel anywhere safe in America as a black person.
Right.
So what the hell are you talking about? The fact is, you know, the Zionists have had more cover and more voice and more power than anyone else. I'm gonna be serious about that. Folks may call me all kinds of names for it. But the reality is, that's what we're faced with. Faced with the media that has become more and more biased, faced with a political entity. In fact, if you look at the Anti-Defamation Leaks site, they are more concerned about young Jews who question Zionism and criticize Israel than they are about white, right-wing organizations. That's amazing that you're more concerned about young Jews who are critical because somehow they don't protect your party line.
Absolutely. And of course, uh we need to know that AIPAC, which is the organization that's controlling a lot of and and spending billions of dollars, including billions of dollars to support Democrats who are more to the right. Uh and and AIPAC uh I believe has more non-Jews than Jews. So a- as has been said often on this radio station, um there are many, many Jews who are not Zionists and who are standing up for peace. But as we also have said before, it's in the interests of the the rulers, the ruling class and the capitalist class in this country. They wanna con- continue to control that region of of Israel and they'll do whatever they can, including uh genocide. So let's let's try to talk a little bit more about what the listeners can do or what the people need to do to stand up and speak out uh against genocide. Um
One thing they can do is begin to light up Phil Mendelson's phone lines. Right? Tell him that they're disgusted, that he would use words like inconsequential when it comes to genocide in Gaza. That he would lie and say that the council does not vote on international issues. But the marquee out front right now is saying we stand with Ukraine. Or the resolutions that Mendelson passed that had to do with Iran, had to do with Cuba, had to do with Iraq and so forth and so on over the years. I mean, so that was a lie, a political lie to try to derail us and to continue to derail us. We're not accepting it any longer. Um you know, the fact is, is that if Mendelson and Furman and whoever else don't have a backbone, then they need to leave those seats and allow folks who are going to have a backbone for the residents of DC.
Absolutely. And the voters need to um make that their feelings firm. And I think it's 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 also important to note that the uh several black city council people have taken a stand or are about to take a stand uh in favor of a ceasefire resolution. Uh I don't know if you you wanna give their names now, but um certainly Anita Barnes uh is one. And uh I I would just like to share that um and Reverend Patty can probably help with this. Of course, many listeners remember our Mayor for Life Marion Barry, whose birthday was just last Wednesday. And I am certain that if Marion Barry was still around, he would be in favor of this ceasefire. Uh I can remember, he was very much um supportive of uh freeing Nelson Mandela uh and very much in in support of of uh ending apartheid in South Africa. I can remember Marion Barry. They tried to keep him from coming on the stage when Nelson Mandela was in town, but uh Marion Barry had his way and he came right onto the stage to welcome back Nelson Mandela. So we it's very disturbing to see our city and really the country, but this region going backwards both in Washington DC and in Tacoma Park, where where there used to be very progressive leadership. And uh I don't know if Reverend Patty or anybody else wants to weigh in on Marion Barry. It's shocking that it's the same city. And this has happened just in in really a short number of years that we've turned into.
Yeah, it's glaringly apparent. This isn't the same city that it used to be. There's a number of reasons. Um it's evidenced through the gentrification and through all of the other pieces that have taken place. One of the uh things that disturbed me uh on Wednesday was to see um a few people, a few privileged white men make a decision for the entire city as if they interviewed for this job and were and were given it by somebody else and not elected by the citizenry of Washington. Um to say things like um they don't want that, I'm not interested in getting into controversy. Well, you 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 put the tick on the table when you lit up the building. You started the fight. And now that the fight is swaying, now that somebody has greased your palms, that has taken care of you, you don't wanna, you wanna act like, oh, it's no big deal. We have to stop allowing our elected officials. And this is why we started the the postcard campaign, telling people to to write in, just flood his inbox, flood his phone, flood his everything that he's got. I don't care if you know his home address, do that as well. Let him know that the citizens of Washington have deep connections in Palestine. We heard those pleas, the people that have relatives that are there now and are suffering. And they want us to be involved. We want to be separated from some of the mess that is taking place up on the hill. We want people to know that Washington DC, we're not a state, we may be a territory, but we have people that have a different conscience than what's going on on the hill most of the time. We're more than that. That's just our industry. So we wanna make sure that everybody knows that we don't need to elect politicians that don't want controversy, that want to sit in their office to get real comfortable. And I think that that's Mendelson's problem. He's been comfortable too long. He gives in. And now that his palms are greased to the point where he can't even hold his uh a decent opinion, that it just slides right out of his hands, that we need to address that issue. And I think that if we look back, um surely we could look back at uh Marion Barry and celebrated his birthday on last week. The reality is that we all have to come together and say enough is enough. Cause every single Palestinian, they, you're looking like us. We've lived this history. When Dr. Tate and I were, along with Reverend Hagler, went over to Palestine, that was the beginning of my senior pastorate. So my church was well aware, don't come to our church for the political season if you not, if you are not in line with the values that we perceive. Do not come. I've told my church, be careful. Don't submit all you, you've got until October the fifteenth to pay your taxes. You don't have to contribute to the coffers that are funding bombs to people that look like you and talk like you and want to live in a free life like you do. The struggle is real and we have a deep connection. And so we need to to find ways. And one of the ways that um we are using right now is to engage um Mendelson. Just let him know you cannot be comfortable. You may as well just go ahead and put nails in his seat. Just make it uncomfortable to sit down and sit in your false notions and coming up with all this political language.
And of course, we don't know, I'm not sure we do know how much money Mendelson or perhaps others on the city council are getting from AIPAC. Uh and let's, we only have a few more minutes left, but let's try to focus on what people can do to try to move the the situation uh in Tacoma Park and and in Washington DC to pass a ceasefire. Um and I'm very glad to see the work that's being done by the DC ceasefire coalition. So keep your eyes open and your ears open for what might happen in the next coming days and weeks. Um but Dr. Tate, anything else you would like to say to encourage listeners to to really take a stand uh in DC and the region against genocide?
I think the people in DC, particularly those who are residents, they just need to get involved. When there's an action that we take um that we're going to um the council, they can go to um Faith Strategies website and keep their ears open and be involved. Contact um Mendelson, um their council person. Let them know that they wanna ceasefire. I think that the uh the trick of of any imperialist system is to make people think that they don't have any power. And we do have power, particularly when we come together and and we use it collectively. And so we have to use our collective voice. Um we gotta be willing to um, you know, uh take a a stand on this issue. Um read about it, not just through the Washington Post or CNN and all those uh mainline uh sort of media outlets, but actually do a little 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 deep dive so you understand what the issues really are and what you're not being told. For instance, we've used words like Zionist and and versus persons who are really practicing Judaism. And there's a conflation of Zionists and people actually are practicing the faith. And if you talk to many Jews and you are one yourself, Joni, you know, there's a difference between uh what they are advocating and what their faith is really about. So I think people need to really get involved. Um I need, they need to call their council person uh when their meetings or when their actions being taken, they need to be a part of it in one way or another.
Absolutely. And I think um there are at least two city council people in addition to Anita Barnes that are taking a a stand. I don't know, is it okay um to mention them?
Sure it is.
So that's Zachary Parker, who's a city council member for Ward Five. And um Janice Lewis George was a city council person for Ward Four, right Reverend Hagler?
Yes, yes.
And those two, uh very proud of them.
And we hope more would step forward. We hope more that will will step forward and express their solidarity.
Absolutely. And we can make it easier for them to do so by showing the solidarity of the people in Washington DC, that we wanna ceasefire. We do want wanna live in, and this is the capital, the belly of the beast. And uh the belly of the beast should be in favor of people living and not killed.
Joni, understand what happens when you get a permanent ceasefire. And the smoke clears. Then all of the war crimes become apparent. That's why they don't want a permanent ceasefire. All of the things that they did to inflict mass murder becomes apparent. All of the atrocities. That's why you got American politicians that have enabled this genocide standing against a ceasefire. Cause then all of the war crimes and genocidal acts become extremely apparent.
Absolutely. Because it is this country, as Mimi with the Palestinian Youth Movement said, is this nation that's really um enabling and and conducting this genocide. Yes, uh I- Israel and Netanyahu are to blame, but it's really, they could never do it without our dollars. And they're using our dollars to to commit this genocide.
I know we're almost out of time, but I just wanna say this. You know, we see these commercials all the time about friends don't let their friends drive drunk. Well, if Israel, I mean, if the United States was so much a friend of Israel, it shouldn't have allowed them to drive drunk either. In other words, it needed to have taken away the keys. What are the keys? Funding the genocide, sending money for military action, weaponry, iron domes, things like that. Because we've allowed this so-called state to be drunk on the wine that America has provided to it, on the drugs and the liquor called money for militarization that America has supplied to it. So America, even though they wanna say Israel is our friend, America hasn't operated like a friend. They've allowed this nation to drive drunk across the dignity and humanity of Palestinians.
Absolutely. And Reverend Graylan Hagler, we are very proud of you. Well, you speak to many thousands, we're on behalf of many thousands of us. We have a minute or so for each person to also weigh in with their final uh comment. Uh I'm gonna ask um Reverend Patty and Dr. Tate. And then we could also uh let's start with Mimi with the Palestinian Youth Movement, your final comment for today.
Uh I just wanna, I wanna talk to all the youth who are listening in. Um and I wanna encourage And I want to encourage everybody to get organized. I want to encourage every single person who is listening in right now to get organized, to join an organization in your area that, again, works to combat, you know, the impacts that colonization has had on all of us, that fights imperialism and Zionism and the injustices as well within your own communities, living under this capitalistic society. You know, it's structured in such a way where we're so worried about meeting ends, you know, and making enough money or working two jobs just to support ourselves so that we don't have enough time to care about each other. And if instead of these billions of dollars being sent abroad to fund genocide, apartheid, and occupation that could go to housing, healthcare, and education, we wouldn't have to be so busy trying to survive here, right? And instead, we could put all of this energy that we have into caring about one another, into supporting one another. And again, all of our struggles are interconnected. There is this intersectionality between all people of color, between Palestinians and the Black community, between the indigenous liberation movement as well as the Palestinian liberation movement. And so I ask all the youth, if you can't get organized, boycott. You know, push your universities to divest. And thank you, everybody, so much for having me on the show and Reverend Hagler and all the reverends for, you know, taking a stand for my people as well. It means the world to me.
And thank you, Mimi and listeners. If you come out to some of these demonstrations, you'll have the blessing of hearing Mimi with the Palestinian Youth Movement give one of her powerful talks. We have, I'm going to say, Dr. Tate, real quick, your final word.
Yeah, I just want to encourage other clergy and faith leaders in Washington, D.C. but in Virginia and Maryland surrounding areas to become a part, because there's still some who are not aboard, who are not having availed themselves with the information of what's going on. And we don't need to take our cues from white evangelicalism. We need to come out of that camp completely and really understand what the issues are. And they are about liberation, they're about hope, and they're just about the sanctity of life on the ground in Palestine.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Dr. Tate. And Reverend Patty, you have the final word.
Well, the final word for me is to make sure that you do stay connected with the movement. Make sure that you approach your council members, support those that are supporting the issues that are valuable to you and your community, and make sure that you see them for who they are, that the dignity of humanity has to be addressed. And as Reverend Hagler says, take the keys away from those that don't understand where they're driving. They're driving down all kinds of humanity and dignity. So together, we can make a difference, and together, we can make a change. So together, let's make this movement happen.
Thank you very much, Reverend Patty, Fears, Dr. Tate, and Graylan Hagler. Thank you to Mimi with the Palestinian Youth Movement. Thanks to Magic Mike, who always helps us. And next week, we're going to be talking about the D C Crime Bill with Harriet's Wildest Dreams and other folks. And the D C Crime Bill is actually linked to this issue of genocide in different ways. So join us next week. And again, those are people who live in, you don't really need to live in Tacoma Park. People should come out and watch what's happening in the city of Tacoma Park where they are refusing to talk about a ceasefire. That's Wednesday at 7:30 at the city council building there in Tacoma Park. Thank you. And we're going out again with Ayana Gregory.